Good evening, everybody. I would like to call to order this Monday, September eighth, twenty twenty five. The meaning of the East Hampton Board of Education Code is right until you leave with your belongings.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America
and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under our individual indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It is the mission of the East Hampton Public Schools to partner with our families and community to prepare confident, compassionate, and collaborative learners who navigate the complex global society. We are going to start this evening with some very special recognitions, some of our favorite things to do.
So, good evening, members of the board. This evening, we have several special recognitions. This past year, we have been celebrating those who have received our annual awards, something very important to the school district, traditions that we have upheld all of these years. Each of the administrators will be introducing those that received the designations within each of their buildings, but also district-level designations. In addition to that, I'd like to introduce Mr. Will Favor, who I don't think is somebody that no one here knows or is aware of. Will has graciously signed on this evening to be the board liaison for the school district. We are delighted to have Will be a part of it with us. Will is one who is interested in policy. I told him that I think he will find these meetings to be very informative, but also helpful for him as he looks towards a career trajectory in which I could anticipate there will be policy decisions could be made in the future, in which he will be a part of moving forward. So introduction of Will Favor. Thank you.
We're delighted to have you, Will.
I'm happy to be here.
Good evening, everyone. So first up is Therese Kahlo, who is this year's Para Educator of the Year. Come on up and stand for everybody to look at you.
Over here.
Therese is a dedicated, dependable, hard-working para educator who greets each day with a smile and a positive attitude. She is often asked to comply with rapidly changing schedules and assignments, and she always does so graciously and without complaint. Her flexibility and professionalism is truly appreciated. Therese is deeply committed to the students with whom she works, and she often independently researches her students' challenges to better understand their needs. She is a valued member of the special education team, is warmly welcomed into every classroom, and is respected by all members of the Memorial School community. Therese approaches each of her students with care. She takes time to build a strong rapport with her learners, gets to know their interests, and works off of their strengths to build confidence. Therese is an asset to the East Hampton Public Schools, and we are so lucky to have her at Memorial School. Congratulations to Therese on being named to share as Para Educator of the Year.
We'll do that after, yeah. We'll have them all stay here as they're.
Good evening, everyone. Now for interventions of the year, I ask that Farid Bishop make his way up.
Farid has made a profound impact on the East Hampton Public Schools through his unwavering dedication to students and the broader school community. His reliability and consistency create a stable and supportive learning environment where students feel valued and encouraged to succeed. He consistently prioritizes the needs of his students, ensuring they receive the guidance, resources, and support necessary for their daily success. Beyond the classroom, his involvement in coaching and running student clubs highlights his commitment to fostering student development outside of school hours. His active participation in the community strengthens relationships between students, families, and the school, making him an invaluable asset to the Panther Public Schools. Farid has made a significant difference in the lives of both students and teachers through his proactive approach to problem-solving and student-centered decision-making. He is always ready to step in when challenges arise, offering thoughtful solutions that address the needs of students and support the work of his colleagues. His ability to make quick, well-informed decisions ensures that students receive the assistance and guidance they need without delay. By fostering a supportive and solution-oriented environment, he not only enhances the learning experience for students, but also provides invaluable support to teachers, strengthening the overall educational community, and very much deserving of this recognition.
It's my pleasure to introduce this year's Rookie Teacher of the Year, Ashley Summers. In just her first year at East Hampton High School, Ashley has already made a profound impact on her students and our school community. Ashley joined us after teaching eighth-grade science in Gettysburg Middle School, and she seamlessly integrated into her new role as a ninth-grade science teacher. Her friendly disposition and deep care for her students have made her an incredible addition to the Science Department. She serves as a positive role model, fostering a learning environment where students feel seen, valued, and comfortable. Her students engage in hands-on collaboration that not only enhance their learning, but also build their resilience. It is no surprise that students often congregate in her classroom before and after school, eager to chat with a teacher who makes them feel so welcome. Beyond the classroom, Ashley has shown her dedication by tackling new challenges with ease. She took on the environmental club and the botany plant sale with enthusiasm, creating a wonderful experience for her students and the community. She also developed new contributions for our school's Earth Week activities, supported by the Environmental Club. Ashley has quickly become an essential part of our Science Department, always willing to ask questions and to contribute to our curriculum goals. Her positive attitude and infectious smile are a constant presence as she is one of the last teachers to leave the building, preparing for her next day. Ashley embodies the spirit of an exceptional educator. We are all unanimous in our care for having her as part of our team, and it's been great pleasure that we congratulate her as being the Rookie Teacher of the Year.
Back again. Last but not least, our Teacher of the Year, Alicia Garska. It is my honor to recognize Alicia as our Teacher of the Year. Alicia believes that inspiring a love of learning and helping students grow begins with building trusting human-to-human connections. She takes the time to meet individually with students, learn their interests and goals, and create a classroom where every student feels valued and respected. Alicia models what it means to be a lifelong learner. She shares her own experiences with students, whether it's growing her skills or reflecting on challenges. Alicia shows her students the importance of perseverance and growth. As our literacy leader, Alicia has transformed the culture of reading at our school through initiatives like the annual reading challenge and the Nutmeg Game show, inspiring students and staff alike. Beyond the classroom, Alicia leads professional development, mentors new teachers, and serves on numerous committees, always working to improve instruction and strengthen our school community. Her dedication to evidence-based teaching, her commitment to continuous learning, and her passion for building relationships makes her an extraordinary educator. This evening, we celebrate Alicia not just for her achievements, but for the inspiration, care, and leadership she brings to our school every day. She is truly deserving of the Teacher of the Year Award.
So if we can have the board members come up to do the bonus with all the awardees.
And we have the awardees in between the aisles, but forward. And then board members, can you? Actually, the word is spread out. I just want to let the board know that all of our recipients were recognized at Convocation at the beginning of the school year. I was lucky enough to be there and listen to them all speak. They gave some very inspirational and moving speeches, and these awards are very well-deserved, well-earned, so congratulations to all of you. And if you'd like to escape now, you may go ahead and do that. Okay, inter-board liaisons, I don't, don't hurt on. You want anybody else here in the room? No?
I was judging, guys.
And I have no.
Big one.
That's very. Okay, and I do not believe we have any plate reunion members on line either. Okay, audience of citizens. Here are none. We have a consent agenda this evening that consists of the meeting, the minutes from the August eighteenth meeting, do I have a motion to?
Some.
Second. Thank you. Motion second, any discussion? Here are none, all those in favor? All nine, thank you, everybody. Okay. Student representative, you are up, Mr. Faver.
Good evening, everybody. It's so nice to be here at this podium talking about happy subjects. I'm really pleased about that, and I also would really like to thank the board for this wonderful nameplate you have given. I feel very important, and you should not be giving me this hype of encouragement because it is bad, but it can only go one way. But thank you very much. I'm very pleased about it. All right. Dear members of the board, my name is Will Faver, and it is a pleasure to be your liaison for the twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six school year. I am currently a senior at EHHS, and I try my best to be as involved as possible. I currently serve as President of the Class of Twenty Twenty-Six, President of National Honor Society, President of the Student Council, and President of the Veterans Day Committee, along with holding officer positions in French Club, Safe Promise Club Advisory and Climate Committee, all while serving as from nature the EHHS marching band and your proud liaison. I therefore feel I am well-positioned to speak to you on student matters and the general atmosphere of the EHHS community. This past week saw the conclusion of the first full six days of school, along with the start of CIAC competition. The overall school atmosphere is full of energy as everyone is fully recharged from a long break and excited to begin their time with new clubs, friends, and classes. To promote this positive atmosphere, the Sandy Hook Safe Promise Club is organizing a start with Hello Week. This week is a week consisting of certain themes for each day regarding awareness towards mental health and establishing relationships with teachers and trusted adults. The Advisory Committee is also hosting on the eighteenth an involvement fair designed to spread awareness about community and school involvement. On Friday, the twenty-ninth of August, senior class held our senior sun runs. Everyone brought something to eat, and banners and chalk were provided. Some drawings can still be seen by the track. This was a wonderful way for our class to spend quality time together, and everyone seemed to take the atmosphere and dynamic with a positive yet melancholy attitude as it helped remind us that we will not be returning next year. Senior events such as these are so beneficial to our school and our class. On behalf of my class, I'd like to thank the board for all your continued support for these senior activities. Student Council will also be having our first general meeting on the seventeenth, where we will begin discussing themes and logistics surrounding our first school at dance homecoming. However, on the sports field, there are also seen some significant bell ringer achievements, along with the girls soccer, boys soccer, and girls volleyball teams bringing in, bringing home several wins just within the first week. And hopefully, many more to come. Thinking about like a catch sign-off phrase, so for the moment, it's, uh, for the moment, consider yourself all caught up. There you go. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Will. All right, administrators, tough act to follow.
Good evening. The twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year spent off to a strong start. As we look here from the principals, the buildings have welcomed back their students into classrooms that were very well-prepared to receive them. From the sneak peek at Memorial School, all the way up to freshman orientation, the pre-opening events at each building made sure students and families felt ready to start the year, and any major transitions like fifth to sixth grade, for example, were supported with welcome-back events. The high school has already welcomed families at open house last week with the middle school and center school welcoming parents later this week, and Memorial School will have two nights for open house next week. While teachers and students have been getting to know each other in coursework beginning, there are many other signs of life renewing as well, from athletics to after-school clubs to the college search process. The schools are alive with many aspects of planning for the school year. Today, we started our fall assessment window as teachers formally assess the skills of students to inform their planning for this school year. Yeah, Ready Diagnostic got underway at Center and Tanta Middle School today, and will start tomorrow at Memorial, as we typically don't assess there first thing on Monday. Instructional Specialist Team is reviewing existing student data to provide additional instruction to students based on where they left off. We make sure we start right away in the fall while we collect new information. Additionally, this team has published our year-long district assessment calendar. It includes all of our district benchmark assessments and the interim assessment blocks aligned to smarter balance. So we already have that roadmap for the year designated and communicated. Those short assessments give timely information about student performance to inform instruction math, literacy, and science. Additionally, I'm especially pleased to report that we've had a positive start at Memorial School, where our compendium of literacy resources has been implemented to support Connecticut Right to Read legislation. You've heard me talk about that a lot. While foundation and integrity, two components of that compendium are not new to our district and have been in place. We have started the year with full implementation of White and Wisdom. We're very excited about that. There was a lot of work over the summer to get everything ready, the materials, the professional learning, and all of that went as planned. We will dedicate continued professional learning time this year, and our collaborative meeting schedules at Memorial School will support this important and foundational work throughout this school year, so it's going to be ongoing for us as we launch this new tool. And I look forward to, once the teachers spend a little more time to get settled, inviting you into classrooms to see that in action. It's really exciting. And soon, the District-wide Professional Development and Evaluation Committee, or PDAC, will be meeting to start to plan our next full professional learning day, which is scheduled for October tenth. A major focus of our professional learning this year will be the newly implemented school climate policy that you may remember you adopted back at the end of June. We did an interaction with staff. I had spoken with staff back in May, but we did more work with them. I spoke directly with each building as well as their building leadership. And so we did continue that work in August, but October will be a big focus for that legislation as we do professional learning and restorative practices. And we'll continue talking about that with staff at September faculty meetings. So we look forward to getting that work underway and it's going to be a good start.
I have a question. You mentioned assessments, so you've already started assessing students?
Yes, so it's starting today. It just, it just started, yeah.
Do we get those results?
So the iReady Diagnostic is our district-based progress monitoring system that we've shared results in the past. We do that three times a year in September, January, and May. In October, I will be giving you an update on the spring smarter balanced and next-gen science standards assessment data. So that's the state-level data that's communicated statewide. It's just released by the State Department of Education, so we're taking that information in and planning that presentation for you.
Do we separate out those students that are here for the summer, that take the summer courses? Or do you just assess their fall versus the springs and hope that the summer courses kept them steady to those, for those students that are struggling?
Their personalized plans are designed to keep them sunny over the summer, so we do reassess in the fall, and we do always look at whether or not students have maintained from our last assessment point. So we have data from May, and we'll have September data as well. We will look at their progress throughout that.
Awesome, thank you.
No problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to begin with a well-deserved thank you to our amazing East Hampton Elementary PTO. Not only did they host a Pop-Simples-in-the-Park event immediately following our sneak peek on August twenty-seventh, but they also rallied a great group of volunteers to remain after that event to decorate the outside of our building for the first day of school. Colorful pinwheels and enormous welcome signs helped calm nerves and brought smiles to the faces of our students and staff. The beginning of the school year has been joyful and productive at Memorial. Throughout our first eight days, our learners have been busy getting to know new routines, learning new skills, and making new friends. With the help of our Positive School Climate Committee, every student was provided a certified passport, which is used to travel around the building to review expectations across settings. As our learners visited each location, they discussed our three rules: taking care of themselves, taking care of others, and taking care of things. Additionally, every teacher dedicated time to the creation of a class contract this year. Each class contract was crafted collaboratively as a classroom community, and every student and adult signed their name to their contract. Last week, in compliance with Connecticut's Right to Read legislation, as Mary mentioned, we began to implement our new literacy compendium, including a knowledge-based program called White and Wisdom. It was wonderful to move from room to room and witness such a high level of interest and dialogue, even among our youngest students. We're very excited to see all that our new literacy curriculum will bring this year. Beginning tomorrow, as Mary also mentioned, we'll be administering our first universal diagnostic assessment. These assessments will help us determine what our students need and will guide us as we plan for instruction. As is always the case, the assessments are scheduled strategically to limit assessment fatigue in our young learners. On Friday, we'll host our first Cheated Pride assemblies of the year. All students and staff are encouraged to wear their cheetah gear. We'll review our three school years, three school roles there as well, as well as best expectations. We will also review our positive behavior initiatives, including the Cheated Pride tickets, positive office referrals, memorial models, our mystery incentives, and our Golden Tray Awards, and our resident cheetah will make a special appearance. The Memorial School Garden Club will meet for the first time next Monday. Beth Haidoo, our garden club coordinator, is anxious to get started. We had a lot of support in our garden this summer from our community volunteers, including several members of the PTO, so there will be plenty to harvest and learn about at their first club meeting. Next week, we will host two open house evenings. On Wednesday, we'll welcome pre-K, kindergarten, and grade-one families, and on Thursday, we'll welcome grades two and three. We're looking forward to a fantastic school year.
I have a question. You didn't mention about the summer reading program at Memorial School. You've said that for the last several years.
Yep.
And that's, that's continuing, right?
It has. Thank you for reminding me. Yep, summer reading and math goals were set in the spring, and students who met their goals will bring those in. We're still collecting them and tabulating them right now, and then there will be a summer reading and math celebration.
Anything noteworthy in that area?
I haven't gotten the data yet because students usually have the first couple of weeks to bring those in, and the literacy specialists take time to look at how many minutes were read, how many books were read in total, so that they can really celebrate those achievements. We also have a summer fitness celebration coming up as well.
Thank you.
And so I'll just mention this, Jeremy, that's consistent across the buildings, the summer reading.
Okay.
I'll just scratch. Good evening. It's crazy to think that Convocation was just two weeks ago today. And while it was exciting to connect with colleagues and peers at Convocation, the real excitement and pleasure came back on August twenty-eighth when we had the honor of welcoming our center school lines back in the building. We're so happy to have them back. The halls feel full of energy and joy again. Students are becoming acclimated to their new learning environments while getting back into their routines, and teachers are excited to bring fresh ideas and strategies into their classrooms. The first days of school have been a balance of academics and thoughtfully planned activities that allow peers to learn about each other and the adults they work with. These tasks serve to build relationships and foster a sense of community. Today, center school students begin their fall iReady diagnostic assessment. The iReady diagnostic is an adaptive assessment that adjusts its questions to suit a child's needs. Each item a student receives is based on their answer to the previous question. So for example, a series of correct answers results in a more difficult question, while a series of incorrect answers will yield slightly easier ones. The purpose of this assessment is to determine how to best support individual student learning, not necessarily assign a grade or a score. Center School is excited this year to be participating in a state grant-funded program to support the learning of students with individualized education programs, IEPs, containing mathematics goals. The Connecticut State Personnel Development Grant, or SPDG, engages educators in professional learning and coaching designed to build capacity in three, uh, three critical areas: IEP quality, progress monitoring, and mathematic instruction using research-validated strategies. Improving educator capacity in each critical area will result in educational benefit for our students. We're looking forward to welcoming our parents and caretakers to open house this Thursday, September eleventh, and in the coming weeks, our extracurricular activities will begin. Center this year is hosting a fall drama program for students in grades three through six, a chess club, student council, and a girls' code club. These programs are well-attended and successful because of our partnerships with dedicated community members. Thank you.
No question.
Our staff and students at EHMSS are settling smoothly into the school year. Their first week was spent revisiting routines and expectations while also focusing on building relationships and fostering a strong Panther community. Our climate committee has been actively working to strengthen community building at EHMSS for activities that promote connection and belonging. In addition, in addition, the committee redesigned our focus areas centering on EHMSS Way: empathy, honesty, mindfulness, and safety, which guide students in fostering a positive and supportive school environment. This year, our positive office referrals will highlight and celebrate students who demonstrate these four values in their daily interactions. Yesterday, our EHMSS PTO hosted a welcome-back-to-school event, the Yarboats Game. Although it was a little wet, students and families had a great time watching the game that kicked off with our invite to high-five players as they took the field to start the game. We're looking forward to welcoming our families this coming Wednesday for our open house event. Families will have the chance to follow their child's schedule, to meet each of their teachers, as well as have the opportunity to hear about the overall structures of the middle school from myself and my assistant principal, Emily Asquith. Next week, we will celebrate and start with Hello Week. Our State Promise Club has organized a full schedule of activities to help foster a welcoming and safe environment for all students. Our staff have been working with students to get ready for the upcoming Fall iReady Diagnostic. This assessment allows students to show what they know, and the results will help guide us in planning and adjusting instruction to best support their learning needs. We started today with a reading assessment. And finally, we're excited to announce that our annual Panther Fest will be held next Friday, September nineteenth. A special event celebrates the start of our cross-country and soccer seasons. Families are encouraged to come out, support our student athletes, and enjoy refreshments provided by your EHMSS PTO. The afternoon kicks off at three, and we hope you're able to stop by.
Question, um, became extremely close to canceling middle school sports. So I'd like to recommend keeping on top of the positive interactions that go on with the students and the parents and the community because that may come up again this year, and I'd like to try and save it again this year. So we need to look at how sports is impacting positively the student population at middle school.
Absolutely. I encourage all of them to come to Panther Fest, which is a great way to kick off and see our student athletes in action.
So I don't know how we can say that or something, but I want to give a positive rapport for, you know, maintaining our sports movement. Thank you.
Yeah.
Good evening and welcome back. I'd like to begin just by thanking our custodians, our cafeteria staff, our counselors, teachers. Good evening and welcome back. I'd like to begin just by thanking our custodians, our cafeteria staff, our counselors, teachers, and all the administrative assistants. Start of the school year at the high school went off very, very smoothly, and everybody was, for the most part, happy back at school a couple of weeks ago. Mrs. Russell and I will begin meeting with members of our classes starting tomorrow to review our policies and expectations for the school year, answer any questions that our students may have, and really continue the positive start that we've had as a school. Beginning this week on Thursday, our school counseling department will have their annual senior planning evening. I know some of you have attended that in the past, and that's a great opportunity for them to talk about all the opportunities for our seniors, whether college, career, two-year, four-year program, the military, or gap year planning. And all that takes place beginning next Thursday and really goes throughout the year. They've already begun to meet with seniors to talk about what next year is going to look like for them. They'll continue with their workshop Wednesday program, which talks about, you know, up the application process, sending scores, the comment app recommendations, and all those important pieces that go along with senior year. And lastly, we had our open house last Thursday. It was extremely well-attended. We're very happy to get to meet many of our freshman parents, as they're new to the high school, as well as see many of our returning families and many of our senior parents. It was sort of a walk of nostalgia as they walked around. So this is the last one where we're going to go to. So, you know, I was actually walking around like, where's Nancy Oakley this year? And I forgot who last year was it?
I was looking for her too.
Thank you. Good?
Thank you. Okay, our health committee.
I can report that we have reached a tentative agreement with regard to the East Hampton School Administratives Association Collective Bargaining Agreement, which will be discussed in executive session with possible action.
Thank you. God bless everybody. By answering institution, buildings, and ground, we have not met recently. Mr. Arn is not with us this evening. And I skipped personal housing curriculum. Mr. Barber is not here either, but housing curriculum has not yet met this year as well.
So once again, good evening, and I do want to welcome everybody back to the school year. Tacko, Principal Verner, we're excited to be back and to thank all of our faculty and staff for all the great work that was done preparing for this school year, albeit with a calendar of time based on the budget that made things very tight for us. But fortunately, the school, all the schools have been able to get underway. And I do want to give special attention to the administrative team, who I know worked tremendously hard through the latter parts of July and into August to get this school year ready to go for everybody. So recognitions to them as well this evening. I want to start on a positive note. First is that at the end of last year, there was a great deal of uncertainty around federal funding and the impact of federal funding on the school district. And although we still have not gotten confirmation on every amount of fund that we get through the federal government, I am very happy to report, and this is my first report to you in terms of funding for this year, that our Title I, Title II, and Title III funding has come through from the federal government. In addition to that, on a very positive note, we have almost doubled the amount that we had in Title I. So last year, we had $62,824 in Title I funds. This year, it has increased to 127,000, almost double, 100% increase in those funds coming to the district. In our budget, that's certainly very, very helpful. We use those funds to offset salaries, benefits for support staff who are there. The purpose of Title I is to provide additional support to students. We've utilized those funds to offset faculty and staff members, and to have that additional amount certainly is very welcomed by all of us. So Title II also saw an increase, not as significant, and Title III remained fairly constant from where we were last year. But we're very, very happy to report that to you all. Administrative negotiations was brought up this evening. We will meet with the board in executive session just to review the tentative agreement, and hopefully the board will take action on that this evening. Couple of things that we wanted to know previously, and I just want to make sure that everybody is aware. So the next two, actually, is the first meeting in October, is the meeting of which we will do what we did last year and present those advancement plans. So the administrators have already begun working on really what their advancement plans, formerly known as improvement plans, what those will look like, what their goals within each of their schools. As they were talking about the data points that are being collected right now, that's what helps them to form what those goals are. So we will utilize that first meeting in September to present those advancement plans. Unfortunately, Principal Verner is going to be away in Washington DC, which I've stated that he could provide his advancement plan at the second meeting of the month, which is going to be, which is going to be September 27th. And that evening is when Director of Curriculum Clark will be able to give our state assessment data, as well as provide higher-level data on SAP. In that evening, Principal Verner can also give his advancement plan to the board for that. The next is, we want the board to be aware on a very positive note that we are working to put together an application. I will have the board vote on it at its next meeting for the board, a cave board leadership award. This was an award recognition that the Board of Education received, I believe, many years ago. And it's nice, it's a nice recognition for all of you, for the work that you do, often sometimes unseen, but yet so important to the school district. So the Connecticut Associations of Boards of Education provide two levels of recognition. One is Level One, which is the Board Leadership Award. And then it gets to a Level Two, but you have had to have met the criteria of Level One for five years. So we have been working behind the scenes. I'm Miss Bulu, myself. We have been communicating with Chair Kohler, and we're going to get that together. The board will need to vote on that, and then we'll get it submitted for the beginning of October. And hopefully, you will be in receipt of this recognition, and we'll do some PR around that once that happens. But certainly with the great work that you have all done, it's an award that's most deserving of all of you. The indoor air quality work is currently underway. We have now been able to have the studies completed at Memorial School, Center School, and the middle school. The high school will probably not be finalized until the spring. This indoor air quality study is what is being funded through capital. It's something very important to us because there are guidelines that the state has put forth as to what potentially we may have to do as a district to raise the standard or meet the standard put forth through the state. What I've asked Centec to do is to preserve the evening of November 20th. That is your second board meeting in November to present the findings to the Board of Education. We'll invite members of the Capitol Committee to be there as well, as well as members of the town, so that there's an opportunity for everybody to hear the initial findings. I'm not so concerned with the high school. I think that you're going to meet standard with the high school because of its recent renovation. But I am concerned. We have not gotten any indications of what the findings are or what the air balancing reports are suggesting. But I have more concern at the elementary level, perhaps more specifically Center School. So I think it's important for us to be able to hear what those findings are, bring them to the board, because some of those will become part of those capital discussions that will take place moving forward. Anne Burns, your new Assistant Director of Finance/Boarded Ed, is going to be starting this upcoming Friday. I do want to give recognition to Mr. Engel, who has been serving on capacity in the interim while we wait for Mrs. Burns to begin. Over the next several weeks, Mr. Engel will work directly with Mrs. Burns to help create a nice transition opportunity for her as she learns the role of being a business manager within the school district. I also wanted just to give acknowledgement. I know I started with the positive of the funds that we've received, but I do want to revisit and continue to revisit over the course of this year what has been lost. And one of the, the only update I want to provide for you this evening, not to talk significantly about all reductions that were made, but one particular one, and that's club reductions. Club activities are so important for our students. We recognize that engaging them in activities at their school helps them to, one, foster relationships with their peers. But in addition to that, it helps them to engage within their schools, often base focus to their academics. And it's something that are important to all of our students. Our administrative team knew that we had a task ahead of us coming into this year, and that was reduce $10,000 worth of club activities. I think it's important for the board to know those club activities. I do want to give recognition to the admin who gave consideration to what are those club activities to remove them. So what they did was took a cross-section of activities at both the middle school and the high school level that touched on different areas, but it wasn't just touching a particular area. So they, they really spread out where those reductions were going to be. We needed to come up with about $10,000 with reductions. They came up with a little bit more in terms of that. But at the middle school, aquapella pop, intramurals, enrolled language club. Those are the three that have been reduced at the middle school. At the high school, Model UN, Connecticut Youth Forum, In the Vision's Literacy Magazine, and the dance team. So those were the reductions that we're come up with for this year. Once again, one could make an argument that any one of those could have stayed, but yet those same arguments could be made for any of our club activities that are important to us. And I feel it's important to at least share with the board what reductions were made for this. Not to bring up a sour subject, but it is something that's important for you all to be aware of. We are going to have a parent series this year, once again, to shed a spotlight, shine a spotlight on the school district. I think it's very, very important as far as public relations, but also to familiarize our families in an intimate, in an intimate setting of perhaps, you know, a handful of families who may wish to come, parents that may wish to come, and to connect with the leadership of this school district and to talk about different programs and opportunities and why they're so important to us. So beginning next month, we have the first of the parent series, which is called Behind the Curtains: Belltown Drama is More Than Just Play. Purpose of that is not just to talk about drama, but also to talk about the importance of club activities and what it means for students. So that's the messaging surrounding that. The next one is It's the Law. We all recognize that legislative mandates are what are driving a lot of the decisions that boards of education are having to consider when putting forth budgetary, budgetary, your, your, you know, your mission and goals is your, it's your district and its numbers. And so we thought it would be important to bring your board's councils' action in to give a legislative update on legislative changes that are impacting school districts right now. So hopefully, we'll get some good turnout from families who'll be interested or even members of the community to come listen to an attorney speak in terms of those legislative changes that are happening. And we're all paying significant costs for those. The next one, You Are What You Eat. You have an incredible nutrition services program in the school district. And there are federal guidelines and state guidelines that we must follow to be able to maintain that program. That program comes at a cost. This year in the fiscal year budget, we projected that we would probably have a deficit upwards of about $20,000 in that program. When you're charging $4 for lunches, you're not going to make profit. Anybody who is in business would tell you that is not a profit model. But yet it is an important program that we have, and I think our cafeteria, our cafeteria staff and our director, our director Kate Cassely does an outstanding job with all of it. So we have one. The next one would be called You Are What You Eat, our cafeteria programming. That will give you background in terms of cafeteria. The next one will be Who's Line? And is it anyway? That will happen in March. That will be mine. That will be on the fiscal year 27 proposal to go over what that proposal is. That gets us right before the budget deliberations are happening within the Board of Finance as well as the Town Council. So I feel like that's an important time to start to talk about that. And by that time, at the end of February, we have already passed the Board of Education proposal for board. The next is also one of the things really important. It's called Board Walk. And that's to be able to share with our families, as well as those who are in attendance, to understand the role of the Board of Education, the importance of boards of education, to understand that these are positions that are critical to our school district, setting goals, setting direction, as well as setting the budget. So it also can serve as an opportunity for anybody who is interested in serving on a Board of Education or any board for that sake to be able to come and understand that, you know, it is a significant obligation to do so. But yet one that is tremendously important, as well as validating for all the great work that you do. And then the last one, we couldn't end the year without getting into athletics. The athletics became a big topic. You had noted it earlier. Tournament, time clocks and tournament play will be one on interest classic athletics, focused really at the high school level. But yet, once again, speaking to the importance of athletics within the school day. So all of these have relevance with our budget, but also ones that we hope to be able to elucidate the wonderful programs that you have in place. The next few I have will be very quick. I want to thank our technology department, as well as Sebby Damkowsky and Director of Technology Fielding. They are creating a digital video series this year that will run on a monthly basis to send out streaming video about the great things that are happening in the school districts. Our administrators at the school did an outstanding job with their broadcasting skills coming into the school year. But we're going to be producing a monthly video for the community, which we hope will be able to highlight all the great things that are happening within the district. A positive note, I'm very proud of this, Mrs. Sata, your former business manager, who still wants and supports this school district in every way she possibly can. She did file the EFS report, so we were submitted to the state. It was due September 2nd. That was completed. So your fiscal year 25 report has been submitted to the state. The auditors have already begun working. As we all know, by the end of January, a formal audit has to be signed off on and submitted to the state. And our auditors have already begun their work with that. But our EFS did get in on time, so there are no fines coming our way from the state for not getting it in on time. And then the next thing, I was just going to go into the enrollment pieces. I know that's next on my topic to share with you. I've highlighted some key things. This is the longest enrollment report I'm going to give to you throughout the rest of the year. You know, I just kind of highlighted if there's any big, any big changes. But since this is the first one, I just want to highlight something. So if you go into your packets and get to your enrollment report section, I'm going to read a couple of things, because I just feel it's relevant in the bigger picture of understanding. So each year, we focus a lot on the NASDAQ report. New York School, the Council gives an enrollment report. So I want to just give you the numbers, so you don't have to go back to looking at budget books as to how our current enrollment reflects in terms of where we're with NASDAQ. NASDAQ predicted that in pre-K this year, that we would have 59 students. We have 58 students in pre-K. NASDAQ predicted 104 students in kindergarten. We have 97. In first grade, NASDAQ projected 93. We have 100 students, seven more than NASDAQ projected. In grade two, NASDAQ projected 118. We have 116, so we're two less there. Grade three, NASDAQ projected 137. We're 135. So we are actually less two there. Grade four, NASDAQ projected 104. We are at 110. So we are plus six in that realm. Grade five, NASDAQ projected 128. We are at 124. So we're four less in that area. In grade six, NASDAQ projected 123. This was the one they got right on the nose. We're 123. Grade seven, NASDAQ projected 125. Grade seven is at 128. Three, they projected three less than we actually have. In grade eight, NASDAQ projected 139. We are at 144. We are five greater than NASDAQ projected. Grade nine, NASDAQ projected 126. We are at 139 there. Okay? Grade 10, NASDAQ projected 123. We're at 134. Higher than that grade as well. In grade 11, NASDAQ projected 129. We're at 128. So we're less one. In grade 12, NASDAQ, NASDAQ projected 113. We are at 123. Therefore, we're plus 10. So you can see that it fluctuates by level, but fairly close. Altogether, we're 39 more students than was projected. Okay? If we want to take a look at total students receiving education services, I want to just make quick notes here. We are, since last June, we left off with 1,718 students in, being accounted for in the bigger picture of the district of those students who are responsible for funding. We're currently at 1,662. So we, over a course of all grade levels, saw 56 students drop. Keep in mind that that is not concentrated. You just saw where that's spread out now across the different grade levels. I always benchmark year to year by taking a snapshot of time, one year to the next snapshot of time. So if we were to go back to September of last year, we were at 1,721 students. We are at 1,662 students. So it's been a drop overall of 109 in a one year's time, but it fluctuates from month to month. Moving into the total students receiving 504 Special Education Services. Memorial School has seen an increase of five students in September of last year. Center School has seen a drop of five students since last year. The middle school has seen an increase of 12 students for special education. The high school has seen a drop of 10 students in the realm, sorry, of 504 services. Okay, we have one additional in Boag than we had last year, and we have a less one, excuse me, in Magnet Schools last year. Okay, overall, we're two greater than we were last year. But from last September to this September, we're 26 less than we were last June. So that's section 504. Now we go to Special Education Service. I'm going to go to the final chart for you. From September to September, from last year to this year, Memorial School, we are less 11 special education students. From September to September, from last year to this year, Memorial School, we are less eleven special education students. And Center School, we have increased from forty-nine to fifty-five students. So we've increased by six special education students at Center School. The middle school, uh, we were at eighty-eight. We are now at seventy-nine in the middle school. So we are less nine students for special education. High school, we had sixty-nine in September of last year. We are at eighty-six. So we are a plus seventeen at high school. We have remained equal with four and four at the Boag. In our magnets, uh, we have gone from five special education students to four. So now we are minus one. And then out of district, uh, we have gone, uh, from out of district fourteen to out of district eleven. So we are less three. Overall, special education services went from three hundred and forty-three last September to three hundred and forty-four this September. So we have really remained constant with an increase of one. And then overall, from, uh, June of the end of last year to where we currently situate, we went from three hundred and fifty-eight in June of last year to September, the beginning of the school year, and we are fourteen less than we were from last June. So that is the longest enrollment report I'll give, but I just wanted to give you context as to N E S D E C and just some big picture ways of looking at that as we move forward.
Okay, question. For these numbers, are these surprises that you have to now, uh, reconfigure some of the classrooms?
No, I didn't know, because as we're, every year, as the administrators are getting to the end of the year, we're reviewing really what the numbers of students are. And of course, over the course of the summer, your administrative team is looking to see where assignments need to happen. And those assignments are made according to, based on the needs of students.
Okay, so it's not all of a sudden we find out, oh, no, ten more students. Correct. We have to find another class somewhere.
Correct.
Okay, and then a quick question, and the one, the little point on the, on the clubs. Uh, the majority of the cost was for a teacher, um,
It's the stipends.
But yeah, um, so without those, can't the, the clubs still meet as students without uh, someone overseeing what they're doing, especially since it's their high school level? Um, can't they meet on their own?
The answer would be, that would be a tremendous liability on the district to not have supervision that would be in there. Um, and I, to be very honest, it's, it's got to be extremely difficult. And we were just, I, I had met with two of our administrators at the end of the day today. We struggle to find individuals to cover, whether it be coaches and whether it be club activities. Our staff are spread really, really thin. Most of them will take on multiple clubs and activities. It is complicated. You know, it's not as easy as saying, we're just going to run this, and perhaps somebody wants to volunteer. Can't force somebody to volunteer to lead it, but you will find that there is a lot of, there are a lot of faculty members who will volunteer their time uh, to support another club. But there's a lot of responsibilities that goes to actually operating a club. And then we would not permit students just to come together at the end of the day to operate within their own because we have a liability associated with that supervision of them in the buildings, albeit they are high school, and I understand that and respect what you're offering and suggesting. Um, but, uh, unfortunately, these clubs, it's also, I think it's important that people recognize that, you know, we can't do morally less. So we're going to say we're going to reduce ten thousand. We're reducing ten thousand dollars with the programming. You know, I think there's a message that coincides with that. And of course, nobody wants to lose it. None of us want to lose it. And perhaps this year, fiscally, we end up in a better position, and we might be able to restore some of these. That would obviously be our primary objective, to be able to create those opportunities once again. I've always told the boards, it sits within a year. You know, we try to work with the budget for the best we can. We hope to be able to do more and try to restore where possible. But we're heading into, yeah, a lot of uncertainty in another fiscal year, uh, with our current, uh, proposal for fiscal year twenty-five.
Uh, I'm really pleased to see the videos. I've already seen one or two, and, you know, uh, I don't know if the, the middle school, uh, welcome video counts in that, but still pretty cool. Um, in regards to those, I, I, I want to make sure that, you know, they're getting out to the community and not just the people who are already, you know, in what's good in school. Uh, are we utilizing social media in any different ways this year?
So we're, we're not, and I know what you're, uh, is there a way that we could get this broadcast outside of the school district? We're very limited in what our capacity is, and the town does not have a system to be able to do that. Um, you know, we have not yet been able to identify, how can we get this out to everybody so they can see the videos? They can get the school-based or the district updates. But it's, you know, we have a listing of individuals who have reached out to the school district, and Selua has been able to put them into a non-parent square group within parent square that we know. But, you know, unless they've communicated with us that they would like to get the information from the district. But we haven't really identified the best mechanism to be able to retrieve that information. We actually couldn't ask the town for their list serve that goes to the town system because that was designated for a particular purpose. And it may not be something everybody wants to receive either.
Thank you. We have no program presentation this evening. We have no unfinished business. If anyone has future business. There are none. We also have no new business this evening. Um, however, we do have several personnel actions, so I'm going to move that the board goes into executive session for the purpose of discussion and possible action regarding the East Hampton School Administrators Association, Connecticut Federation of School Administrators, Local Forty-Two J Collective Bargaining Agreement for the period of July first, twenty twenty-six through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-nine, as well as discussion and possible action for the purpose of student records, uh, regarding a student presidency matter. So.
So, one second.
Second session. There. Bye. Thank you, everybody.